Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council meeting was called to order following answered roll call.
Mayor Reidenhour.
Here.
Pearl.
Here.
Knox.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Neely. Newland.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. Go through. Let's go off to the report.
One million, six hundred and five thousand, fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents in all funds. Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents in the general fund.
Any additions?
We did have additions today. It was another payroll day. You guys should have copies of those.
Any questions on the bills? Okay, bills are read. Resolution eighteen dash four dash one was adopted on motion line.
Knox.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
All right, let's go to committee reports. Okay, place your board.
The last couple of months have been slower than usual from an overall call volume standpoint. However, there have been a few cases come in that have been very time consuming. I'll highlight a couple of those. Last month, we arrested with the assistance of the August County Sheriff's Office Shane Matthews, Jr. on five counts of unlawful sexual conduct with a minor. This arrest is after he allegedly got a fourteen, now fifteen-year-old girl pregnant. The investigation is ongoing and additional charges are possible. We took a report of a stolen vehicle from IPS West at the beginning of April. The vehicle belongs to a Wayne'sville resident and two workers at IPS West saw the suspect leave with the vehicle. Vehicle and suspect are still missing, but we have heard that it possibly be in Kentucky. We are continuing to follow what leads.
I'm so sorry. I thought it was next month. I had my time on long. Just say here. I'm here.
A hyperdermic needle commonly used for heroin was found lying in the middle of the road in the 200 block of East Ohio Street. Needle did appear to have been used and looked as if it has had heroin residue in it. We don't have any suspects. A resident actually called and said that they saw it out there, so I went down and picked it up. We did perform a canine sniff at IPS West on Friday. We found marijuana and arrested one who was in possession of suspected fentanyl. So, charges are pending on her on that. But once we get results back from the lab to confirm whether it was indeed fentanyl or not. Sunday morning, early Sunday morning, we did have a suspected drug overdose at 108 West Wofford Caneta Street. The person that allegedly overdosed is also an employee at IPS West. So, I don't know if it's the same batch or not, but we are investigating that. And we'll be getting some search warrants and things like that in the future to figure out that investigation. So, other than that, it was a big weekend prom. It was a Saturday night at the school. Didn't have any issues there. And the racetrack opened up, so no more any issues out there as well. So, it's hopefully, even though the weather's not been real cooperative, hopefully spring and soon to be summer, it's going to be here. Then it's going to get busy. That's all I have.
Any questions?
We will be posting the Blacktop project for bid on Thursday. It will be in the paper and it's already on our website. That will be for a May opening bid. The engineer and I met today and went over the street scope of what potentially the project should cover. And it's going to be the park street going back partially to coordinate with the walking path. And then also a portion of West Ohio Street, which is from Southwest Minster Street to, I think it's Church Street. It would be that branch will get redone. And then silver down here.
Sugar.
Sugar. It will be sugar, doing sugar from Mulberry to the school. And now preliminary, that's all we can do with the grant that we got. That is with the grant we got a little over a year ago. We held off because we wanted to package it with a walking path. We're going to be bidding the walking path at the same time, which is another grant. That's the Green Ohio Fund that we got. And so, we're hoping by putting them together, we'll get the best quote and bid for our Blacktop. That scope of the project is also laid out with the engineer and I. Tentatively, right now, we will tie on to the current walking path at the driveway point. It will go around the new ball diamond. It will go to Wayne Street and come up behind Wayne Street in our alley. And then we'll go and meander around through the recycle. And then it will go to the outer perimeter of the land we acquired. And then come all the way back around and come back into the park. So, the scope of the project will be all in Blacktop. Now, we do desire at some point in time to have trails and paths through the buyer property we acquired. But we may do that with stone or we may do that with future projects. Just because it felt like we ought to complete the circle first and then build into that. So, that's the scope of that project that we'll be going out to bid. I do have some engineering drawings that I can share with you, you know, later in the meeting or at the end of the meeting, or make them available to you to look at. And then also, that's all I have for that at this time. I would like to ask for an executive session for potential litigation and then also conversation with personnel. And I'd like for everybody and council and the mayor and the attorneys for that part of it. And I don't know if we would do that now or later.
It doesn't matter. We'll get through some of this stuff and finish off. It's up to you guys.
Mr. Rush, your second.
Whatever's the best for everybody.
Knock it out now?
Do you have to go through something else?
I got one quick thing before we go into that. Regarding, I got a bunch of calls when we had the power out.
Okay.
Is there a way that we can get some kind of notification that the people can go to for updates? Why it's the power's out? Because my phone got blown up. My people calling me, you know, for just updates. I know that's part of being a public servant now.
Well, we do post on, we do make postings and we do answer the contact. The dilemma is it's an act of nature, an act of God.
I know.
And when it happens, it takes the power out, so it takes out a lot of your communication ability. And so, what we try to do is inform people as quickly as we can. Fortunately, even it's been village-wide outages in the last six, seven years, eight years. We have not had a village-wide outage.
It's been really good compared with.
A village-wide outage as a result of our equipment. Every time, it's been because of our transmission service. Case one was a car hit a pole and took it out. This last one was lightning, I think, hit a transformer in New Hampshire. And they literally had, I guess, to bring a bulldozer in to get the trucks back to it and pull it out. Because of all the rain we were getting. And then another time down Lakeview, lightning hit a pole there. I don't, I mean, I'm open to any suggestions, but when you lose power, it's really difficult. What we do right away, the chief has always been excellent about making it on the website.
I just didn't know if we could, I didn't know if we had a place that I could just say, hey, we're going, we're going, we'll do an update on this such as such, you know, I addressed it and I can say I addressed it.
One thing I would say is for council people, persons that may do, is contact either myself, the chief, or the mayor. Because we do have a communication line to DPNL. And they've actually gotten really good about giving us projected timelines. And then we do try to share that with the community as quick as we can. So, I would say, first course of action is for any one of you to contact the three of us. And we will try to get that information to you as quick as we can. And if there's a better way, I'm open for it.
Yeah, I just don't know if we could either post it on our town website or whatever, say, hey, projected time, you know, so they can go to it.
I think Nathan did do that.
Yeah, he does usually. He puts it on Facebook.
We also looked into it like a one-call system, similar to what the school has. The cost to maintain that is incredible.
I'm sure.
It's not real feasible for what we have here at the village. You know, school has, they send out quite a few one-calls, so it's fine for them.
There's just some of the DPNL contact, you know, if somebody can make contact with them and just somebody post it, heck, it's just me I do it.
I mean, I can tell you, we have, whenever the power goes out, the building down at the park, that phone number goes crazy. And my phone goes crazy, Fred's and the mayor's phone. I mean, we feel your pain on that. And a lot of times, and a lot of times, it's the same people calling back every half hour wanting updates. And so, I'm not sure how you're going to ever address that because.
This last outage, I drove to New Hampshire. I talked to the supervisor over the transmission and all that. And she gave me very good projection of time. And I reported back to our workers, because we have to keep the water plant going, sewer plant going, all the stuff going, stoplight and everything, until it comes back on. And, you know, kind of is what it is.
That is one thing I do want to reiterate, sure telling them what the mayor's saying. You have to understand, when there's an emergency like that, there's a lot of things that are taking place.
Oh, yeah.
Rather than just answering phones and being a communication service. Because we do have to energize the water system with generators to make sure it's still pumping. We got to get the red light going. We got to keep the stations running. So, there's a lot of things rather than just answering phone calls. But the website has been a good tool, but I don't know.
If we come up with something and, you know, if it has to come on me to post something, I'll take that on to post it. If, you know, if you need a communication.
Well, if you get the information from one of us, I'm sure everybody will post it.
Right. Well, I had went back down and she had given me a projection of five o'clock. And I went back at about 4:30 and it came back on. When I got there, they were pulling line trucks out of mud with bulldozer. And she said, we're getting real close. You know, she's upset as well. And all the workers out there trying to get it back on. And she said, it's only going to be moments.
And the other thing is, we had a wedding taking place that same day.
I know.
And there was a big request to DPNL to try to get temporary power to that facility. We don't have the capability. And they were willing to consider that. They called me and asked for permission to make that happen at that site. And I gave them permission. Because we, as long as they could secure with confidence to me that when they did do that and the power came back on, there was no back feeding. We always have to worry about that. But them, of course, that's what they do. So, they have the equipment to do that. Once they made me aware that they had that covered, I said, absolutely, you've got a green light to do that. He called me back shortly after and said, we're not going to be able to do that because the load was so heavy on their workers down there that they couldn't take off from that to do that. And I asked him, I said, well, I think the reception was at 5:30 or 6:00.
Five.
And the projected time to come home was five. And I said, just keep staying with the, and it sounds like it happened in time. So, you know, we feel your pain.
You know, and it's not really that much of a hassle, you know. But make it easy. If we can come up with something down the road, you know, possible.
You always want to improve.
Yeah, and something simple, you know, if we can get it narrowed down to make one phone call. Somebody called one person and they get, okay, we'll get her posted. Done deal. Just an idea. Somebody come up with something, I'll be glad to post it, whatever.
Well, like I said, if you get your information from the chief, myself, or the mayor, that's usually then go with it.
Okay, okay. That's all I wanted to be up. We're at the mercy of DPNL and its projected times. And they were pretty far along this last time.
If it's our equipment, then maybe we can give you an idea, but we're going to be working on the problem, not.
Because DPNL won't, don't post anything for us. Because I tried going to their website. There's not, didn't even say August County. I didn't have any outage. Well, see, the same time we were out Lakeview, there was another problem, took them out as well. So, they had double crews working. It was just one of those crazy things. Hopefully, we can all survive without electric for a little while, you know. I had to get that out before I forgot, because I forgot the meeting.
So, do they want to do an extension now or later? I didn't catch.
Well, if Tom has something he wanted to bring up, he probably don't want to sit here and wait on us all evening. I've got nothing to do.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm just here to answer some questions.
Okay.
Okay, we've got the mayor's report. One thousand thirty dollars with August General Fund, mayor's work account for March. Brad's second. Okay, Fourth of July is on Wednesday. We can either do it the Saturday before or the Saturday after. Do you have the 30th of June or the 7th of July?
So, 30th is June, in my opinion, be the best. Because if you have it after the 4th, people have already maybe been off work or been on vacation and they don't want to.
Yeah, they might actually be going on vacation when we get before the 4th. So, I'd say do it at around that time when we get before. You're the chief. It doesn't matter to me, the one or the other.
This is a hard topic in town, though, so you guys don't care.
I vote for the 7th, just because what, because I can go. Every time, I can never go. And 30th, I can't go.
In that case, you can't vote then.
But I think that's just me. That's just my opinion. I'm just saying.
It doesn't make me any different.
No, you guys do what you want to do, but I, every year, I can't do it and I couldn't do it again, but that's fine.
July 7th. I recommend July 7th.
No.
Don't ask and then do that.
Indian Lakes having their fireworks July 7th, so usually.
There'll be a lot of traffic.
That'd be good then.
So, you're staying, don't have it the July 7th or June?
No, I'm saying it's typically the same weekend as the fireworks.
That'd be good. Most likely, if anything's going to happen for that holiday, it'll be probably the 7th rather than the 30th.
Yeah.
People taking off, because most people would get off Wednesday. And if they're going to go camping or do anything, celebrate the holidays, celebrate from the 4th to the 7th. 7th it is.
Oh, I just had my mail around.
Something, no, she can't make it.
Okay, let's go to old business.
There's a copy of what the solicitor came up with for this driveway legislation. He just, Mark Van Dyne sent that to us and just wanted you guys to kind of review it, to go over it and see if there's any changes you want, but it's about 50 pages. So, why I've created one.
Ron, do you want me to read that now?
We want to update on both your logic of doing this. It's about putting a toll. It's about having full attachment rates are controlled. And not saying it's in place or necessary, but what AMP has advised us and along with our solicitors, if we don't do anything, then we won't have any option down the road if somebody comes along once attached to the poles. By doing this, it just simply says, at least it gives us an avenue to discuss it if it does come. There's nobody asking to attach. But if we don't do this, we won't have any say in the matter. So, it's just language to protect the village to unfold.
And it's just a suggestion to me. I mean, it can be changed, modified. But like Fred said, I think you need to do something, have something in place in case of this happen. Or you'll end up with a report longer than 50 pages. He's like, sorry, Fred. It's you and I, Fred. Sorry. We need to do something with this stuff? Okay.
Do each one their copy. I can provide that.
Will we test our? Next meeting. Next meeting, all right. Okay, any other old business? Let's go to new business.
These are online, so I guess I'll start the show.
Start the plot.
Okay, the first one is a.
They do make closure.
First one's a resolution that we passed 2013 for the Lagoon Project. And we just need to change the amount from 1,500 to 2,200 that's transferred in order to pay those loans since that project now ended. So, that's what the first resolution is.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 18 dash four dash two, a resolution to amend Resolution 13 dash 12 dash four. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay, try to make this short and sweet. These next few, the park enhancement project that we have. We have to set up two separate funds. We need a capital project fund that's going to encompass the entire project and the debt service fund. And that's going to be oil loan that we had to take out from Moskowitz Bank. So, that's the first part of it, is we need to set up these funds.
I'll make a motion to suspend rules in three readings and declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay, the next part of it is, we have to advance money from the general fund into the park enhancement fund because one of the grants we got from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources is a reimbursing grant where we will pay it and then they will reimburse us back. So, I have to keep doing advances from one fund to another. So, I need your permission to do that. The second part is. I shouldn't need to adopt that one.
We'll go ahead and do the motion for the first part.
Yes, go ahead, myself.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 18 dash four dash one, an ordinance authorizing the fiscal officer to set up a capital project fund and a debt service fund for the park enhancement project and declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely. Zimmerman. Now, the next one is three advances. I'll head it myself.
I'll make a motion to suspend a rule of three readings and declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Zimmerman.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 18 dash four dash two, an ordinance authorizing the fiscal officer to make advances to and from the general fund for the park enhancement project and to declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay, the third part of it is, I need to make a transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund to actually pay the loan that we got from Moskowitz Bank. So, that's what this one's for.
I'll make a motion to suspend a rule of three meetings and declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 18 dash four dash three, an ordinance authorizing the fiscal officer to make a transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund for the loan that was obtained for the park enhancement project through Oswego State Bank and to declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman. And the final one, because I need you, need you to many appropriations, allowing me to do all of this.
It'd be funny if they said no at this point.
I know.
So, this is all to do with staying correct with the law. This is what all, all of this is. I'll make a motion to suspend a rule of three meetings and declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
So, these are going to be the funds that are going to be transferred right now or whenever you need to do it or what?
Yes, this is what I'll be doing to those permanent appropriations that we pass at the beginning of the year, switching them from these accounts and funds.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 18 dash four dash four, an ordinance to amend appropriation ordinance 18 dash one dash one and to declare an emergency. A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do.
We're out. Going to new business. We're going to discuss. If not, you have a request in amendment favor for an executive session.
I'll make a motion, we're going to second motion.
He already gave the reasons why.
Did they have to state it though?
They should.
It should for the record, yes. A second in the motion.
To discuss possible litigation.
And personnel.
And personnel.
Rhonda, you need to say that. To discuss possible litigation and personnel.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Neely?